So, concern going for appeal meeting. Let's rise inside of the page. I'm glad you're here to speak on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Where are you?
Zubal?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Moller?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
On this evening's agenda, we have a public hearing for area variance two zero two one A B dash six, Christopher and Carolyn Charlin, one eighty seven Potash Road, or two storage buildings placed on vacant parcel without a land use permit. After that, we'll be reviewing minutes of previous meetings and then doing all this. I officially told the Charlins or the public notice that the the public hearing will begin at seven oh five. Is that correct, Karen?
That's what you said at the meeting, but I put it in the paper at seven o'clock.
Oh, well, then we can proceed. We can proceed. Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, you are present, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And you can hear me, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. I need to read the public.
Right. Oh, go ahead.
Public hearing, please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Huron, the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing, they assume, on Thursday, February tenth, twenty twenty-two, at the regularly scheduled meeting at seven P. M. The meeting will be held at the municipal complex five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Huron, to hear comments on the following variance application. Area variance twenty twenty-one A B dash six, Christopher and Carolyn Charlin, property owners, parcel number two eight five point dash two dash fifty-six point one one six, zone R U and O S residential rule and open space, three point ten acres, location one eighty-seven Potash Road, Lake Huron. The applicant placed two storage buildings on a vacant parcel without the required land use permits. The Lake Huron zoning ordinance, Article Six, General Requirements, Accessory Buildings and Uses, Section A one requires that a permit be issued before their initiation. Section A two requires a certificate of completion be issued for the principal building that the accessory buildings are accessory to within one year of issuance of the permit issuance of the accessory structure. No permit has been issued for a principal building. The applicants are seeking a variance to allow the two accessory structures to remain until such time as the principal building is permitted and a certificate of completion is issued. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentation are on file with the office of the zoning officer. Contact the zoning officer at five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four, Monday through Thursday from eight thirty A. M. to one thirty P. M. To arrange to review the file. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard via Zoom in respect to the proposed application at the public hearing. Persons or their agents may submit a letter or join the meeting via Zoom. Directions to access the meeting via Zoom are on the Town of Lake Huron's website at townoflakehuron.com. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Huron zoning, P. O. Box three seventy, Lake Huron, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four, published January thirty first, twenty twenty-two. I did have one person in my office looking at the files. It was, um, what do you call him? Moger. Jim? Yeah, Jim Moger, sorry, I wanted to call him by his nickname. Um, and he looked it over and he had no objection to the variance. He was there representing the Harris Land Trust, preserved, Harris Preserved Land Trust, however it's written.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. So, you have not received any letters. I know we have a letter from APA saying that it is not an issue with them.
Correct.
I know we have a secret application. Nothing from N. Con.
No.
Anything, any other letters from the public?
No, nothing else, I see nothing else.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, do you have anything you'd like to say at the public hearing?
No. Hopefully, we can just resolve this and do what we have to do to be able to get the permits.
That being the case, I will close the public hearing. Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, I have some questions for you. In your application, the history of the property, it's big property purchased in August tenth of twenty twenty. I know that I've asked this before, but when were the the two pre-manufactured structures placed on the property?
August twenty twenty. I'm sorry, it was purchased August twenty twenty, um, uh, June of twenty twenty-one.
Were both structures placed at the same time?
Uh, about a couple of weeks apart, about, yeah.
Is there a well on that property?
Yes, we put a well.
Is there a subject?
No, there will be. I mean, once we put a principal house up.
Under your description of a proposed action, you say your proposed action would be to build a house. At this point in time, what is the status of that? Do you have a design? Do you have a builder? When is, what is the anticipated construction start date?
Well, we just, um, we don't know what the timeframe for building because we just need to know what what we have to do first before we, uh, mess up again. It would be probably starting in spring into the summer, uh, just for the clearing of the land.
You have a design for the primary structure?
We haven't gotten that far yet, simply because we just, we want to be able to do it properly. We're just thinking of something simple, a small cottage.
So, at this point, you have not, you have no design for the structure, you have no design for the subject, and you have no builder who is able to perform this work. And the timeframe that you're proposing, is that correct?
Exactly, yes. We do have someone lined up for, um, contractor that we 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 know of.
You know of the contractor, but has he agreed to build this structure?
We have not. No, we haven't, we haven't reached out to him. We ju- we just getting information on who is local that would be able to help us.
Okay. I'd like to go over the five questions with the variance. Question number one, describe how the reported variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. The Charlins have answered, there are no other buildings, the vacant property next door is Harris Preserve and will stay vacant. The other adjacent property has a manufactured home on it, will be putting a small house, nothing out of the ordinary. Jamie, how about you comment first?
Well, it's kind of vague when you're asking how this variance will alter the characters because you already altered the characters. If I have two outbuildings, it's not a primary, so. And without any real plans to build a primary residence there, I have to agree, say that it has really altered the area of there, yes.
Annie?
Uh, I think the question was answered.
Ralph?
I think the question was answered, but I think that you're gonna have a hard time putting a house on the side of that ledge right there and that these buildings are probably gonna be in the way for where the house would actually go. But, um, that's my opinion, question answered.
I, uh, I agree that the question is answered. I, uh, agree with Jamie's concerns. Right now, I also agree with your concerns as to being able to build the primary structure without having to relocate the accessory structures. The accessory structures are portable structures, they can be. And the other discussion on question number one.
I'm fine.
No? Good.
Question number two, describe what alternative explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Responses, we were not aware, we should have started the house first. Now knowing this, we will be doing soon. We did not know we needed a permit for the storage doors. Annie?
Question's answered.
Ralph, question's answered. Jamie?
I guess we're right back to what we always talk about, the permission forgiveness thing. And really ignorance of laws is no real excuse for, but the question's been answered.
I agree, the question has been answered. There is, uh, a solution other than a variance, which is not stated here, since they are portable elements, that would be to remove the variance. Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Responses, the house we planned to build will have plenty of space to meet the setbacks. The current storage buildings already meet the setbacks. We do not feel this is substantial. My turn to go first. The zoning regulations require the primary structure to be built within one year of the building of an accessory structure, the primary structure is not yet on the property. The accessory structure was placed on the property in June of twenty-one. This is now February of twenty-two. So, we're eight months into that one-year timeframe. There is no design, there is no contractor. And I seriously doubt that the Charlins will be able to achieve a construction or even breaking ground for this structure within the one-year timeframe. So, I believe the variance is substantial. Jamie?
I agree with what you said, and I think it is quite substantial because you're kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse. So, um, I think it's more of a very substantial question.
Ralph?
I believe it's substantial, not only from what's going on on the property, but as far as setting precedents. Here in Huron, it's kind of like if you can get it up really quick before you get caught, you're okay with it. So I think it's substantial in that aspect that we have to kind of look into precedents when we're setting. And if we're not gonna uphold or follow the laws that we make, we're kind of like taking all of the authority away from our enforcement officer. So I think it's substantial in that aspect.
Annie?
Um, I agree with Ralph in that aspect, but the question is the request for the variance, is that substantial? And I'm thinking they answered that question. They don't think it is substantial. I mean, we're talking about two portable structures that can be removed, they're not a permanent structure. And we don't let our community know that we need to have, we don't have the verbiage out there in writing, saying that it is a zoning requirement to have a, a benefit and what those requirements are. I know we can plan on eventually getting that, but I think we can't really kill the people that are new to the area and not knowing what our laws are or what our rules are and to assume that everyone should know it, I think we're being a little harsh. That's my opinion.
Okay. I want this, in just one quick second. Also, if these buildings were put at specific distances to meet the setbacks, if you know enough to look up what the setbacks are, then you should know enough to look up whether or not you need a permit or to look up zoning. So it's, like, you can't say it needs the setbacks and look at one page of the law, but not look at another page.
I think that they are claiming that they need the setbacks because once the buildings were discovered and I went up and looked at it, we determined that they did need the setbacks. I don't, I'm not sure that they knew that they had the setbacks right from the beginning, but, you know. Where they are placed right now, they do need the setbacks.
Okay, I thought in the original application, they wrote that they put it in to meet the setbacks.
Yeah. Well, I think they have put that, I don't know.
Was the lot cleared when they, upon their purchase, did they have a lot cleared to put these two sheds in there?
I don't know, you have to ask them.
Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, did you hear that question?
Yes.
Yes, it was cleared some of it. We cleared a little bit, but most of it was cleared already.
Did you clear yourself or did you hire a, um?
I did it myself. I did.
I'm sorry?
I did it myself.
You did it yourself, okay.
So, was the placement of the structures and being the setback requirements intentional or fortuitous?
No, our land is pretty hilly and the most flats, the flattest spot that was there to to set them and it's where we put them.
So, you were not aware of the setback requirements when you located the structures? But it turns out that where you located them meets the setback requirements, is that correct?
Yes, but, um, you know, we put them in the most level spot we could put them. You know, we tried to. But I didn't know, you know, what the setbacks were, no.
As your question, Ralph, they did not know what the setback requirement?
Yeah, I was, I was just mistaken because I thought something on the original. No, because they have to review the application, I don't have the original one. On the original one, it was written that setbacks.
Most of our property is on a, on the mountain and we just try to utilize the flattest area we could. And the reason why we put the buildings up, we plan on building and we're, we wanted to store some of our materials there as we're building and we did not know we needed the permit for that, so here we are.
Any further discussion?
Well, so.
Question number four, describe how the reported variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Responses, the storage buildings are not out of place in the neighborhood. Does not affect the physical environment in this neighborhood. When we build the principal building, it will meet all setbacks. Including the subject system, there will be no negative environmental impact. I am satisfied with that response.
Your questions have been answered satisfactorily, yes.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Responses, we now know it was self-created, we did not realize we needed a permit first. Like, occurred, it's self-created.
I agree.
So. Any further discussion on the questions we need to review?
No, I'm also.
In that case, I'd like to go over the secret. Starting on page one of four. Location, one eighty-seven Potash Road, two structures on property without land use permit. Charlin's the owner, Pleasant Valley, New York. Question number one, is the proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a plan or the law ordinance? Administrator rule or regulation? The answer is no. Proposed action require a permit approval and funding from any other governmental agency? No. Um, the statement, there's a non-jurisdictional letter from the APA at the bottom, Karen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me just look again at the size of these buildings because they will need a Warren County building permit for the larger of the two buildings.
Of the two current buildings?
Of the two current storage buildings.
The ten by twenty?
The twelve by twenty building will require a Warren County building permit. That should be changed to yes. And it will be Warren County building codes jurisdiction.
Question number three, total acreage of proposed action, three point one acres, acres to be disturbed, one two five acres. Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, is that point two five acres, is that the, the base on the area that would disturb to locate those buildings? That the footprint for the building, what is the basis for the point two five acres?
Oh, my gas.
Yeah, that's, acres to be physically disturbed.
Thank you. Total acreage is three point one acres. Land uses that occur adjoining and near the proposed action, residential suburban and forest. Question five, is the proposed action permitted use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, there is no response. I believe that answer is yes, Karen?
Yes.
The proposed action consistent with predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. The site of the proposed action located in or doesn't join a state listing critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? No. Question nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Response, not required for storage? The answer is no. Question ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? The answer is yes. That is a private water supply. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater facilities? The answer to that is no, they're not existing, they're future. Twelve, is the site container structure that is listed on either the state or national register of store places? No. Proposed action located in an archeological sensitive area? There is no response.
I think it's moving now as well, then.
Thank you. Any portion of the site of the proposed action or land that joined the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by the federal, state, or local agency? No. Will the proposed action physically alter or approach into any existing wetland or water body? No. Identify typical habitats that appear on or likely be found on project's site? Fox, we just checked, is ours. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government that threaten or endanger? No. The project located in a hundred-year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from a point or non-point sources? The answer to that is no. Based on, based on the fact that the two structures are there, however, when construction starts, that changes. The current application, the action is already over, so any stormwater discharge has already happened. Well, some words discharge to be directed to establish advanced systems? No. Eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in the common of water or other liquids? No. At the site of the proposed action or of a joining property, the location of an active, closed solid waste management facility? No. At the site, it's, at the site of the proposed action or joining property, then started to remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? No. And is signed by Christopher and Carolyn Charlin. Part two. The impact assessment, which we are the lead agency. Question number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use or zoning, the land use plan or zoning regulations? I will ask counsel. My intent would be to answer these questions as if these buildings were not there, but since the buildings are already there, it's not proposed actions.
Correct, so the proposed action essentially varies to allow the two accessory structures without a principal. So I guess it's, they are already there, so it's not as if it is an application to install the two.
Correct.
But the proposed action needs to allow them to remain.
Thank you. That being said, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use or zoning? Land use plan or zoning regulations? If the building, principal building is constructed within the year, then everything within zoning regulations. So the answer to that question is no.
But it's if it's built in a year.
Right, if it's not.
Correct.
But at this moment in time.
It's moderate to large.
It's moderate to large.
You can't base it on like if and hope.
You can't base it on the future.
Current facts.
Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of intensity or use of land?
Well, should we like vote on this? Four of us to answer, or like how do we answer?
I don't. Counsel?
Yeah, you can, you can either vote on each particular one and answer it individually, or if there's agreement going through. But I would say if there's, there's a difference in opinion on each line item, I'd rather have, I guess, consensus on each one as, as you move.
Okay, I'll go back to number one again. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? So, the proposed action is So the proposed action is the variance to allow the buildings to remain. So while allowing the buildings to remain. Create a, a material conflict with adopted land use plan. To which I believe the answer is no.
Land use plan or.
Or zoning regulations.
And a zoning regulation sufficient to primary building there first. So I would.
Well, it would be a concept. The primary, they still have four months.
To install the primary building without a contract.
I, I, I understand, I, I understand that.
Can I, let me, also, in that regulation, just to be clear. If they don't complete that principal building within the year, the way it's written. They can come back to the zoning board of appeals and ask for an extension. A one-year extension, that's the last, let me read that section through thoroughly, so that you really are hopefully understanding what it says. Where applicable, such permit shall be issued conditional upon satisfactory completion and issuance of a certificate of compliance for the principal building. Or use to which it is accessory. If certificate of compliance is not issued within one year from the date of the issuance of the permit for the accessory structure or use. The conditions upon which said permit is issued shall be deemed not to have been complied with. And the accessory structure or use shall be considered in violation of these regulations. Except as application may be made to and considered by the board of appeals. Which board may, for due cause shown, authorize a one-year extension to allow for completion. With the conditions under which the permit was issued. So theoretically, they have the year and then they can appeal that for an extension of one year. So just keep that in mind as you're working through this variance.
Well, should we ask them if that's something they'd like to do and. Should I go through all those four areas? Making your judgment possibly tonight?
I would like to complete the seeker. I will tell you that. At this point, my recommendation would be to table action on this variance. To give the Charlens the sixty-two days that they're allowed. To be able to provide us with better answers to as to design and when construction is going to start. And that way be better informed as to whether or not it is feasible for them to have this, the structure completed even within the additional year. Which design regulation allows us to author.
I guess we'll finish up the seeker on that, right?
I would like to finish the seeker.
Okay. We're still on number one.
We are still on number one, and so since the, since there is, is dissension. I will, I will, I will call the board. I'll start. Please, moderate to large.
Not a small.
Moderate to large. And I'm also no more, and since we have four members on board.
Here's, here's what she, so you can have. You know, a potential impact, right, that no to small, so that means that yes, it could be an impact that there is. Direct contribution with the zoning ordinance, but that it is not going to have. A moderate to large. Or significant impact that. The violation is not going to have significant impact. For the zoning area. But my recommendation is, if there's uncertainty, to err on the side of a larger impact. And address it. Necessary recession as to. How that plays a role into the determination of significance. But rather. Go kind of overkill on the potential impact. And then. Explain that position. In terms of your final determination of, is there a significant adverse impact in the environment?
I defer to counsel because that's why we have counsel.
So we can, for the answer to one, we can answer that it's split between large and moderate, correct? I mean, small and moderate, or do they have to go with one answer?
There would have to be a one determination, that's either known as small or moderate.
Okay.
Based on counsel's advice, I will. I will change my vote to moderate. Annie? It doesn't, it's, it's, it doesn't matter, it, it, it's three one now.
We'll stick at three one.
When I look at the impact, I'm looking at the, the larger scale, like the people that really want to get a permit, that try and do it right. That are denied a permit because they don't have a primary structure, they want to build a garage. And then, you know, the people try and do it right and they get shot down, and then the people that sneak it in are okay with it, that's. When I say, that's my opinion, why it gets a larger impact.
In my opinion of being a no to a small impact is because it's still, it's not a permanent structure. Neither of them were permanent structures, they could both be removed.
My instinct would be more moderate because the zoning regulations kind of concur with what Ray L said is, it's, it's. The way you build a mine, I guess, it's going to go along and put the character of the neighborhood in regulations, that's why we have zoning regulations. To put this in perspective, so it's totally defined, there's only regulation, so I think it's moderate to large.
I will concur that it is moderate to large, the answer to question one is moderate to large. And the gun, question number two, will the proposed action result in change in use or intensive, use or intensive use of the land? I would say no. Is there any dissension on that?
I'm fine with no.
Annie?
No.
Ray?
No, I agree with you.
Proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? My answer would be no. Any dissension?
Concur, agree.
I agree.
Will the proposed action have a, have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from expensive piping of light? No.
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 Will the proposed action causing an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No.
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 Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public project wastewater treatment utilities? No.
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 Agree.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? No.
No.
Agree.
Will the proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problem? No, it's already there.
I agree.
Annie?
No.
I agree.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
No. So in part three, you've got to respond to that one. Got to identify the impact for that one that you answered moderate to large, sorry. Including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce the impacts. Should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. That's the only one out of the eleven, right?
And I think for this, it's very similar to the criteria for an area variance, where you can have. Something like a self-created hardship, but still fine in favor of the variance. So in that type of analogy. You can have something that is potentially a moderate to large impact, but yet the project as a whole. Will not have significant adverse impact on the environment from what that. Part three is asking is kind of like you would do in explaining the rationale for granting an area variance where there's self-created hardship. Why that one moderate to large is not then creating. A significant adverse impact. On the environment. And so that's, that's kind of the direction that, that, that third part is bringing me towards.
But the question, it's not real. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? How do we tie that to the environment at this point? Like this is talking about, it's going to create a conflict with the regulation. And now we have to describe how it's going to affect the environment.
Right, and, and so it's, it's kind of speaking environment as a whole, so it's not just necessarily. Okay, stormwater or pollution, it could be noise, it could be light pollution, yeah, it could be. You know, putting a Stewart's in right next to the residential neighborhood, so the, the environment kind of being. The community in the neighborhood.
So I need some kind of an explanation for that one, you know, even if it's. I don't know, I don't want to put words in the mouth that have an answer to an explanation there, but it's one question out of eleven and that one response. Does not necessarily, is not significant enough to create a substantial environmental effect?
Right, that, that is a. That is essentially the, the argument to make in favor of it not being a, what we call a negative declaration. Not expect, you're going to be, you're talking to your moderate environmental effect, it's going to be more a moderate zoning regulation. And I think to that, you can, you can add in what you were discussing is that this is, there's potential that this is curable. And so the, the probability, maybe there's questions about that, but there is a potential. That. The impact of this violation of the zoning law could be cured if the primary structure is in place within a year.
I'm just. Though I'm going by the variance that's in front of us, it's not about that. It's, are we going to allow the two structures to stay? We're not voting on. What and when they're putting. The cottage or their primary residence on that property. That's why I'm in, I'm answering these questions on what's in front of me, not on what's going to happen in the next year or two.
Correct, as you should.
That's why we're at the freedom, freedom one on that first question. Because even though in a perfect world, I mean, we want everyone to know that we're a zoning community, you have to have a permission, you have to have it before you do anything. I'm sitting on this board for many years and with my colleagues. And we were told, we, you know, you needed a, a permit to put a, a pool, a, one of the kiddie pools in your yard. And I know I didn't know that, and I heard my colleagues say they didn't know that. If we're on the board and we don't know all the laws. I don't think we should persecute anyone that makes a mistake. I mean, I don't think they purposely said, oh, well, we're going to put this up there so they can't do anything about it, I think that they just didn't know. They're new to the area.
I have a zoning board, zoning board, it's, it's, but they can do whatever they want.
Well, that's why we're, we're, we don't want to put the, the carpet for the horse. But we, we need to educate our community by signage, by verbiage, by educating them, not by, you know, crucifying them.
Oh, they don't want to crucify people, but I mean, this gets to the point is, you know. We'll be doing each discussion about this, but I mean, indeed, everybody grabbed their hand, you move into a new area, you want to try and check the rules or rights or something in the area. I mean, it sheds the big difference in the kiddie pool.
Yeah, but it's also a portable one, it's not, I mean, they didn't go in and put in a big foundation and build this big monument. It's, it's a portable shed.
Which they did not also move it or what you brought, or do any action to rectify it.
Okay, but they, they do in the future do plan on putting something in there where they wouldn't have to move it.
But we don't know that, they're just talking about it.
But that's what they're saying, but what we're doing is, we're talking about the two sheds that are on there, are we going to allow that?
Right, but and just to clarify, at this point, you're still talking about the environmental significance of potentially allowing. So before actually even getting into the merits of, should we grant the variance for the two accessory structures or not? First thing is. Are you satisfied with the environmental review of potentially allowing the variance? Right, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't, personally, I don't see the environmental effect of this at all. I just think it's a rule, it's only doing. That's it, right, so I, that would be, I don't think much more than said than that.
And you're saying it's a moderate to large impact on.
Yeah, but it's a total breaking of the rule.
But that's not, not for the environment.
Not for the environment, but for the regulations, for the, for land use plan or zoning regulations, zoning regulations. This is our zoning regulations. I mean, what are we going to do when someone took, woke and declared, we're going to be broke?
No, but have signs saying that we are a zoning town and we do need to have permits for anything we do.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, most people are thinking that, okay, it's a, something portable, I mean, I'm not going to need a permit because it's portable, if they don't like it, I'll take it down, I'll move it. That's just. I think if we have rules, we should let.
On the, on the application from like garden time or whoever delivered it, there was a little checkbox is a permit needed. But that's not, that we can't look at that. All these places that deliver these sheds, there's usually a checkbox, you sign away, we're like, no permits needed or permits needed. Because garden time doesn't want to drop it off.
And then pick it up. I mean, like, do I want to shut this just one more time and then get it from their local town?
Yeah, you have to sign away with like garden time, any of these shed people to say like, yes, I've done my due diligence because they don't want to have to come pick it up.
Okay, but we don't know if that was the case here.
No, no, that's why I said that can't count right now.
Right.
I was just throwing it out there.
I would propose that the response to part three. For the. Moderate to large impact on question one, the. This is an indirect conflict with town of Lake Luzerne's zoning regulation, Article two A and six A. This can be corrected by building a primary structure with one year, in one year, there is no serious environmental impact. The impact is on the zoning regulations, but it's not an environmental impact. I'm fine with that answer. Well, when, when I work, I agree with her. I get those words she wanted. On that basis.
You guys want screen?
I've got to leave it down.
Okay.
We have determined that both action may result in one or whatever country large significant impact. It, it. If not an environmental impact. It's. So it should be. Will not result in any, any significant adverse environmental impact.
Right.
All right, I will sign this again this year again.
Okay.
As I have previously stated. I'd like to make a motion to table action on this variance. Or max out the sixty-two day.
Correct, um, sixty-two, that's, um, that's number eight, any?
Double check it.
From the close of the public hearing, so.
And that's, when does that, the year start? Does it start after?
The issuance of the permit for the storage buildings.
Okay, so.
If they had gotten the permit when they put them there back in June twenty twenty-one. They, they would have until June of this year, and I don't know how you look at that. Because if they get their variance, I'll be issuing them the permit for those buildings. So do you go from that date or do you go from the date when they were placed? That's a question for council.
Yeah, I, I did look into it, but my initial thought would be it'd still be that same. The, the same initial timeframe of when the structures were placed, not when you get to the variance. So I don't think that the timing changes. Through. You know, kind of a late approval process.
Okay.
I think you're held to the same.
So they basically have through June of this year and then they can be granted an extension.
That's my, that'd be my, um.
Okay, and it is sixty-two days from the day of the hearing.
They make one of the buildings, you call it a primary structure, pay taxes on it as a primary structure? Could they be away from this variance people?
It's not considered a primary structure, primary. Um, let's, can we go back to my correct wording? I always have to double check this. Where, it has to be for the permit for the, if, if these are accessory structures. I wouldn't, I, I, that, they're, they're being used as storage buildings so that they become an accessory structure.
Okay.
By that use and they're not larger than, um. A principal building is usually by definition, three hundred square feet or more, depending upon what the use of it is. And any. A, um. And also there's a twelve hundred and fifty square feet definition in, in that principal building also as well, so it doesn't fall into any of that. In the definition, they're not, it's, they're not a principal building.
No, I concur with Karen, with Karen, I have the definition of principal building in properly, and neither of those structures. Need the requirement of a principal building.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'm taking a motion to table action on experience for sixty-two days from today. To allow the Charlens to be able to provide the board with more detailed information as to the design. The builder and anticipated date for start construction.
I'll second that.
Move on?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Make sure the applicants understand what you.
Yep. Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, you understand what is expected of you?
Yes, we have sixty-two days.
Correct. To provide.
Get a permit.
To get a.
Some design for the building, the location on the parcel. The size of the structure, how many stories it's going to be, what type of foundation you're installing, where the sector will be. Who is going to be the builder and the anticipated start date?
That, that they can be very, an extension of that by you children.
Oh, the two, they're sixty-two days.
Yes, but they also have to understand that by time clock starts June of twenty twenty-one. So they got until June of twenty twenty-three to have this completed, basically. Or they have to, I don't know.
They have until June twenty twenty-three if the board decides to.
If, right, if they, if they, correct.
Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, what, um, Mrs. Potney was, was referring to is that. We are allowing, we are allowing sixty-two days for you to provide the information that I just requested, however, the clock. For construction of the principal building, the one-year time period begins in, in six twenty-one. So you have until six twenty-two before that one-year time period runs out. Prior to that, if you are not going to meet that one-year time requirement, we need to come to the board and request an extension. Of that one year to a two-year time period. You understand?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, anything else? Council?
No.
All right, next time on the agenda. Seven minutes?
No.
Uh. New and old business. New business. Karen provided you in your packet. Uh, a letter that. Received by our town clerk. Uh, was received today or yesterday?
I believe it was received yesterday.
Received yesterday, I was provided with a copy of this earlier today by Karen. Uh, letter from Mr. Herring regarding signage in the town. And how we are not adhering to our zoning regulations and things are not being enforced, enforced. Having only seen this this morning and not having had any chance to investigate it, I will, for the record, acknowledge to Mr. Herring that we have received his letter. And given time to look at it, we will take appropriate action.
We're the zoning board of appeals, there's no variance in front of us, so this doesn't even really apply to us. Why do we even have to acknowledge we received it? We only come into play when somebody supplies variance.
For your appealing and decision.
Yeah, it says, there's nothing to do with us. This is a grant he has with the town board.
Council, we have our responsibility.
Uh, no, it's, it's a comment, I would, I would agree, it's essentially a comment, it appears to be more of a comment to the town board, but it, it's not an action item by any means.
Okay, in that case, we have received a letter and it is not an action item.
Correct, mention object.
Now. Want to have any other business?
I'm all good.
Karen?
I'm all set.
Want to return, second is.
All favor?
Aye.